Commissioner Sheila, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
My pledge will be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Secretary, what is our next item?
Roll call. Commissioner Flowers, she is not here yet, she should be shortly. Commissioner Rimmick.
Here.
Commissioner Sheila.
Here.
Commissioner Shishko.
Here.
Commissioner Van Duker.
Here.
Chair Price.
Here.
Thank you.
Secretary, next item?
Consent calendar, approval of minutes for January tenth.
Do I have a motion?
No motion.
I have a motion by Rimmick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Shishko. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Secretary, next item?
Public comment. Under government code section five four nine five four point three, members of the audience may address the commission on any item within the jurisdiction of the commission or on any agenda item. Those wishing to speak on non-agenda items will be called upon at the beginning of the meeting. Those wishing to speak for or against an agenda item will be called upon after the presentation by the city planning department and the applicant for that agenda item.
Are there any speaker cards for non-agenda items?
I have none.
All right. Next item?
Ally, are we going to move the general plan?
I think we need a motion to redo the agenda, to move item up.
All right. I will entertain a motion to move item, is it five?
Six A.
Six A, up to the beginning of the agenda?
I moved that we moved the agenda to the, we moved the item to the beginning of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Van Duker, seconded by Commissioner Rimmick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next item?
It's going to be regular calendar items, six A, general plan amendment, annual report. State law requires that all cities and counties submit their legislative body the annual progress report on the status of the general plan and the progress of its implementation. Project planner, Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commission. You know you've been on the commission more than a year if you've heard this report in the past. So we do this every year. It's required by state law that we do a review of our general plan. As you recall, the general plan is a document that includes sixty-four goals and several policies and actions that the city developed, you know, a number of years ago after cityhood that really laid out the future for the city in as far as development, how we'd like the city develop. And all departments in the city have some role in the general plan. So we take this, a very important document. Do you recall when you review projects, they all have a component of the compliance with the general plan. But every year, we must look at our general plan, review actions over this past year, and report that to the state. They want to know how we're progressing in our general plan. And more specifically, there is one part of the general plan called the housing element, and that is really what the state is most interested in, is seeing how we're meeting our housing obligation. So this is the report for the year 2023. We'll present it to you to review, ask any questions, and it will be heard by the city council tomorrow night, as we need to turn it into the state by April first. That makes sure that we stay on the good list with the state, as most of our grants that we apply for, if not all, do require that we have submitted our annual report, or we don't qualify to receive any of the funding. So the housing element, I did mention, it's a very important piece to the document, probably the one the state is most interested in. The state tells us, or through some methodology, whether you agree with or not, they say how many housing units the city must allow for. Doesn't mean we have to develop them, but they want us to be prepared for that increase or that number of units. So they give us this number every seven years and, or eight years, and we have to kind of track our housing development process, see how we're doing to meet that goal. That's called RENA, so if you've heard us mention that phrase, RENA, it means Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and that's the number that the state gives us. So progress on our housing element, we track housing entitlements, which are the projects that you see that process through planning. So these are larger developments of housing units. They want to know when an application was submitted, was it approved, not approved, how many units, how many did they request, and how many did we approve. So we have to track them that way. And then they want to know what the building permit stage, how many were submitted, how many were approved, and the dates, all that occurred. So we have done that for the past year, and we are happy to say that we've done really well this past year. As a matter of fact, we have, we, building permits, which is really what we care about, right, because those are the ones on the ground that are being built. Forty-three housing units were issued, and then we had a hundred and one units that were actually finalized. That means they started building in 2022, but they were finalized in 2023. So a hundred and one units were finalized. We did issue forty-three new permits for new housing. So that's important. You probably could guess where those came from. The Mitchell Village project was a pretty large contributor to that number. As far as housing entitlements, we had, we had two that we have had in progress this year. One went through the process, and then one you have not seen yet. One was for the ninety-four units on Sylvan that processed. Ultimately, that project did not get approved, although we didn't get any credit for that. But we still have a project of sixteen units that will come before you at some point this year. And then when we have those applications and the approval of those housing units, we have to, we have to sign them to an income category. So what type of housing is it, and what type of income level family is going to live there. And so that's done through a variety of ways, but as you can see from the chart below, we've had quite a few that were credited towards our extremely low and very low income qualifications. So that's great. We had thirteen. Low, we had a hundred and fifty-seven, we had eight, and then two hundred and forty-three for total in this planning cycle. This is not just in 2023, but the whole cycle is four hundred and twenty-one units. So we've done quite well, quite well towards our total goal of six hundred and ninety-seven units, and this ends in 2029. Some of the other milestone projects that the annual report looked at is, as we mentioned, the Mitchell Farms or the Mitchell Village subdivision was completed. All two hundred and sixty homes have been built out. The Arcade Triple Creek Trail that we're all very excited about, it's nearing completion. That was a very significant milestone project for the city. The Wyatt Ranch subdivision has started. It's been on the books for quite a while. It's the one at Lawrence Avenue and Sunrise. It's a twenty-three unit development. They did start construction. And then we have our Fair Oaks Senior Apartments, which is an affordable apartment complex for seniors on Fair Oaks near Greenback. So that was a large contributor to that low income level that I showed on that chart, where these hundred and eight units, as their rents are based upon income. So that has started construction. Hopefully, it'll finish this year and get some tenants. And then Sunrise Point completed this year. So that's the supportive housing project on Sunrise near Oak Avenue. It's a forty-seven unit complex for the targeted residents that have had issues or were, you know, didn't have a permanent address or had some sort of issues. So it's a supportive housing unit, so that completed this year. So that was forty-seven units. So some very big milestones completed in 2023 that we should be very proud of. So as mentioned, we do have to take this report to you, and then we take it to our legislative body, the city council. We have to forward it to the office of planning, the governor's office, and to HCD, which is Housing and Community Development, which is the oversight of the housing element. The report presented to you highlighted some of those milestone projects that I talked about, and then it updates, updated the chart, our numbers, and our RENA numbers. So I'm asking tonight that you, if you've had a chance to review the report, happy to answer any questions that I can on it, and then if not, move to accept it, and then it will go to the city council tomorrow night.
Thank you, Allison. Do any of my commissioners?
Shishko? Yeah, thank you for the report. In the document here, I see that, I guess one way we get those numbers up is by having ADUs, right? That also adds to those numbers. I can't find the new law that passed that I'm slightly, that was aware about, about the pre-approved, our pre-approved program. So far, the pre-approved program allows for just the few plans that we have in the city. And this new law, I think, by a certain year, my understanding of it was that if, you know, somebody went through the process, built a custom plan, like a neighbor can take that same plan and that's already pre-approved, if that makes sense. Is that, something like this coming? That would definitely help with these numbers as well?
Well, the law requires by 2026, I think it is, that every city or county have ability for pre-approved plans. Happy to report that we have done that now for a couple of years. So we were ahead of the game. And so that means that they will have, they could either have their own set, like what we have. We've hired an engineer, have them design, they're pre-approved. We make them available for free to the public. Or we could buy into a bank of pre-approved plans that will be available statewide, kind of a program coming out towards that, or we could offer those. So there is two options. And it's not just that I could build an ADU and then my plans have to be given to a neighbor. They have to be, go through some sort of vetting process and be approved by the city. So there is, will be a bank of plans open statewide where people could download plans, and then they could take them to their jurisdiction. That is to come within the next couple of years. Or they could use the ones we already have now that have been pre-approved.
Okay, thank you. So that's basically coming in the future, right? Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Sheila?
Under the income levels, I noted that we had a hundred and fifty-nine low income, where the seventy, where seventy-nine are, or a hundred and fifty-seven, where seventy-nine are required. Why, how did that come to be? Why would we strive for that, or did we strive, or how did that come to be?
Part of that comes from, as Commissioner Shinko alluded, the ADU program. So the ADUs are the accessory dwelling units where you can build as a second unit on your property. And through working with the state and through some of the research we do, including getting a survey from the people building the ADUs, most of them are built for family members, and so they don't collect rent. And so that qualifies it as an extremely low or low unit because they're not renting them out at market rate.
Right.
So that, with the success of the ADU program, that's really helped that number quite a bit.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? And now I open public hearing? Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
All right. Seeing no one jumping up, I'm going to close public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to accept the 2023 general plan, annual progress report, and direct staff to forward the report to the appropriate state agencies in accordance with government code section six five four zero zero.
I'll second.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Shishko, seconded by Commissioner Sheila. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item?
Public hearing, item five A, eighty-two fifty-eight Holly Drive parcel map. The applicant is requesting to approve a proposed parcel map to subdivide an existing point six seven acre parcel into two lots. Project planner, Allison Bermudez.
Good evening, Commission. This project before you is a parcel map, which means they're dividing land from one larger parcel into multiple parcels. In the case of this, we have one parcel that is going to go into two. So from one large lot, as shown on the picture there, outlined in yellow, to two. The proposal is reviewed, consistent with the general plan and the zoning designation. It's in the, the general plan designation is very low dense density, and the split will keep the lot in that same designation. It is, it has a zoning of RD three, which has a ten thousand square foot minimum lot size, and the two new lots will meet that requirement. The lot is currently vacant. There is no development proposal with this project. It is merely a division of land. As you can see in image of the property here, there's nothing unusual. There's no creeks or any significant amount of trees. It is kind of an odd shaped, but the land division, as we show you the map, it still will meet the requirements. Here's how the lot will divide. So parcel one, over ten thousand square feet, ten thousand seven hundred square feet, and parcel two will be quite a bit larger, eighteen thousand square feet. The sites are accessed from Holly Drive. As shown in the blue is the existing easement that goes from Holly Drive and will provide access to parcel two, and then parcel one will front directly onto Holly Drive. As mentioned in the staff report, this is kind of part two of an earlier map that was done in 2019, where this was one larger parcel, and it went from one parcel to two, I believe in 2019. And so this is a division to further divide the, one of those parcels that were created in 2019 into two. A couple questions on the lot. It does front on Holly Drive parcel one, which will require frontage improvements at the time of development. But it's important to note that those frontage improvements will occur at the time either these parcels, one or two, developed, or the parcel, the remaining parcel that was created in 2019, is actually those frontage improvement requirements are on the map from 2019. So they kind of, they carry over onto these. So whether these two lots develop first, or the existing lot that was created in 2019 come in first to develop, then the frontage improvements there along Holly will happen at that time. As mentioned, the project does meet all the requirements for zoning and general plan. It is exempt from CEQA, as shown there, and the conditions of approval have been shared with the applicant, and they're in agreement with them, and you've been provided a copy. Therefore, we ask it for your approval, and I will give you the motion.
Thank you again. Any of my fellow commissioners?
If parcel two develops first, will that trigger street improvements?
Yes. So parcel one or two on this map, should either one of those develop first, will trigger it. Or if parcel, I think it was called parcel two on the original map, if that one comes in first, which is shown here, if you see the turnaround and the little fire area there, past the blue, if that lot develops first, they would, the improvements would be required.
All right, thank you. I think I read something about the existing house being demolished. Can you give more details on that?
I'll have the applicant ask that, answer that when they come up.
Any other question?
Just curious, like what, if you can explain that.
We'll do that at public, at the public hearing, public comment part.
All right. I'll go ahead and open that public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Steve Norman. I'm with CNA Engineering. We're the engineering of the project. The owner of the project is here. And the owner's here too, to answer questions about the construction. But we concur with the staff report and all the conditions, so we're good with the way it's written. And the owner here is here to talk about development, if you want to go with questions on that.
Hello there. My name's Ron Lees. I'm the owner of the property. So questions about the house, the existing home that's on it is, it's actually where the turnaround would be. So if I had to, or if I started on the project, I would have to do something with the home right away, so.
So it looks like the current road is, I guess that'll need to be moved towards the border of this, this new one. Is that right?
Yes. So, and that, like I said, the turnaround is basically where the house sits. It'd be nice if I could save the house, but I can't.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm just frankly, it's more out of curiosity. Is this a family piece of property, or did you just simply buy the property? I was curious more than anything else.
I bought it years ago, and it's been, actually, one of my friends is living in that house. That's why I'd like to save it, but I can't, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers on this?
No speaker cards.
All right. I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to adopt the resolution twenty-four dash zero two determining the project is categorically exempt from CEQA per section fifteen three fifteen minor land divisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, and to approve a tentative parcel map to allow the division of an existing point seven acre parcel into two parcels, point two four and point four three acres in size located at eighty-two fifty-eight Holly Drive, subject to the findings contained in the staff report and the conditions of approval provided as attachment two.
Good job. I'll second. I have a motion made by Commissioner Rimmick, seconded by Commissioner Flowers. I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I'm going to go ahead and read my fancy pink card. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal and the appropriate filing fees, two hundred and fifty dollars, with the city clerk not later than ten calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item, please.
Item five B, seven seven six six Auburn Boulevard. The applicant is requesting approval of a one-year extension for development proposal to repurpose a former gas station into a restaurant with walk-up drive-through service that was approved in 2018. Project planner, Allison Bermudez.
I'm still here. So I said of the general plan, if you were here, you've been here a year, if you heard that presentation a year ago. You know, you've been here a really long time, if you remember this project back in 2018, as it did come before this body back in 2018 when it was originally approved. So this is seven seven six six Auburn Boulevard. It's a project at the corner of Watson Way and Auburn Boulevard, across from Rush Park. Used to be a gas station at one time, was reformatted into a good donation center or something, but it's been vacant for a very, very long time. Back in seventeen and eighteen, we worked with the applicant who purchased the property and had some great visions for the site. He was making it a drive-through pizza place called Quick Slice. We worked with him for many months, getting a really detailed and great project that was really going to bring some life to that area. The project was approved, include the drive-through and the formatting of the building into his pizza. It was going to have some outdoor dining under the existing gas canopy. Unfortunately, following 2018, he became ill, and then COVID hit, and then he did pass away. So it's been in the family since that time. They've been trying to figure out how they're going to make it work and what they're going to do with it. They've had a number of inquiries from a variety of different uses for it, but nothing has really come to fruition. So what we're doing here is really just trying to keep this project alive in some format. So should they find a tenant that can do something close to what was going to be before, or something similar, or some something, that the entitlements would not have to go through that whole process again. So the project was approved in 2018, and then in 2020, during COVID, the city granted all projects a guaranteed extension, five-year extension from the original approval. So that extended it until 2023. And then they requested a one-year extension, which they were entitled to through our code, which ended, actually would have ended on February twenty-eighth, which was the night of our last meeting, but we had to cancel it. But it has carried over. And so it would have ended in 2024. So should they sign, find somebody, we've had to go through this whole process again. So we're really just doing this to kind of keep the project and help the property owners out, and really trying to bring some life back into that center. So we're asking for you to grant another one-year extension. Our code allows that to happen. This would be the final extension that they'd be offered. We don't know what they're going to do. They don't have any interested people. As I say, different uses have come in and out of their contact over the past few years. So this is really just kind of setting it up for them to kind of, one more last push to get something in there. So that's what our request is for you to grant this one-year extension.
Wonderful, thank you. Any of my commissioners have questions? Commissioner Flowers?
No, I'm just going to make a motion.
I do.
Commissioner Sheila?
I, I understand that the original owner of the property had a vision, obviously sort of an entrepreneurial gentleman, ran a car wash, was a realtor, that's why he apparently bought this property. And I know that the, I'll say, the business viability is not necessarily our purview to consider that. But I question, I really question the viability of this whole concept. I did look into it. The tanks had been removed and the site remediated. That it was estimated, I believe it was back around COVID, I don't remember the exact dates in reading the information. He estimated it would cost about eight hundred thousand dollars to do this project. I'll bet that's at least doubled now. And I am not convinced, frankly, that a food processing in a former gas station, that that is ever going to get approval, frankly, without basically tearing that building down and, and tearing up all the asphalt and whatever else. There have been extensions to this project. The project proponent has passed. The family has been given a chance, you know, and I think they're sort of holding on, and I respect that they are trying to honor the vision of their family member. I respect that. But I feel they've been given the opportunity to do something with this. And frankly, I feel that nothing's happened because the concept's not viable. I don't think, given the costs to do it, I don't think selling pizza by the slice is, you know, because it's got a, you know, the possibility for a drive-through. I don't, just don't think that's going to work. So basically, I, again, I know I can't necessarily consider that, but I do think it's detrimental to the public interest to, to maintain, to continue to extend this. This has been an eyesore on Auburn Boulevard. We are trying obviously valiantly with grant money and whatever else to improve Auburn Boulevard. I've just frank, I think frankly, to give them another extension is folly. I think as much as, like I say, I respect the family, but I do think it's time to say no. That's enough. You've had enough chances. Nothing's happening, and therefore, I am going to vote no on this issue.
Thank you. I just, follow up real quick. So what this does, if they have a proven entitlement, they, the project that comes forward, should there's something, doesn't have to necessarily be pizza, just want to say that, what, the use permit is for food service and a drive-through and the site plan. So those are kind of locked in with the use permit. So they could find another user that offers some type of food product that, because I get what you're saying. I don't think pizza by the slice, you know, and things have different now since COVID. But, so they're not necessarily locked into every detail of that use permit. There is some flexibility, but it would keep the ability for the drive-through portion and some sort of service-oriented use there viable.
Thank you.
I do have a question now, sorry. I happen to love pizza by the slice, and would go through a drive-through to get a piece of pizza in a minute, just saying. If this doesn't move forward, and we don't approve this, what are their options?
So their, most of their interest has not been from using the use permit. You know, I think they've had a lot of interest from other types of users, but those users are not allowed in that area either. So there's conflicts on that side, too. A lot of car salespeople want to locate there, and that's not really the vision of the plan at this point. So it is, they either have to come to the So it is, they either have to come to the table with something better or different and let us work through the zoning and see if we can accommodate that, find, or find someone user that fits this. But there will have to be conversations. If you don't approve it, doesn't move forward, then these entitlements just die and it sits, and it remains as it is today. Even if you approve it, it may remain as it is today, nothing may happen. But it does put that hard and fast time limit of one, of till February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five for their option to use those use permits.
And then if nothing is done after this one, that's it? No more exceptions at all? This is it, right?
Yes, for these entitlements, what they'd have to do, should they find a user, let's say March of twenty twenty-five, and these have expired, they would be starting over. So that means they'd go through the entitlement process again, come before the hearing to have the use permits and stuff approved. I mean, it would kind of, they'd start over, basically. So that's if this, when this extension is over, if it's approved, or if it dies tonight, whichever way, then they would be starting over when they have a new use come in.
What type of fees have they paid to, to this point? And would they lose that if it died tonight?
Yeah, so the fee, the fees that they've paid so far, they never got as far as the building permit stage, so they didn't have any building plans that they paid for, it was all entitlements. So they got their, the entitlement fees that they've paid for were to process the application, which we did back in two thousand nineteen. So they received the services for what they paid for. At the time, those processing permits were probably five or six thousand dollars, and that got them to the hearing and got them an approved project. I'm sure they had their own investment in place because they had construction drawings, they had elevations, and they had done all their side, all that work was done for the actual, to file for the building's permit, and I believe that's when his health deteriorated and he died soon after.
So this entitlement allows them to modify to this vision to, and extending them would kind of keep in place some of those fees that they have already exhausted, and they wouldn't have to.
Well, they will have to pay fees, because all the fees that they've paid so far have been utilized, and that was to process the permit, and they received their entitlements. So that part, portion is done. What they, should they find a user that follows this plan, you know, very close, and we say yes, this, what you want to do is, is very close to what was approved, just go to building and file your permits, then their fees will just be the traditional building permit fees that they'd be paying anyway. But they wouldn't have to pay any more planning fees to us to process anything that has been done. Should they come back and they have a user that's close to what they were going to do, but maybe it's a little bit different, maybe it has different hours of operation, or they want some different type of circulation, then we may say we need to modify that existing use permit, and so there will be a process and a little bit of feed come that for us to take a look at it, to modify it, should it be something that's not, you know, relatively close to what was already approved.
Yeah, I think, I think it's really important for us to recognize that the citizen did pay some fees, and to me, it's kind of a no harm, no foul. I mean, it, it sounds like it's probably going to just remain in place unless somebody decides to utilize the existing plan. So I'm not sure if the, if the city or the community is really hurt by us doing this extension, and I would support it, just because I don't want them to lose their money.
Yeah, it is a different, kind of a different situation, and we've been working with them for a very long time, and then, you know, they had COVID and all that kind of stuff, and then the, and then the family ownership issues that came up. So, but this ultimately, whether you approve it tonight or not, would either end tonight, their existing approvals, or would ultimately end February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-five.
Other comments?
What options does the city have, should this not go through, not go forward? What options does the city have to deal with in a, basically an abandoned building like this, a rusting abandoned building? What are the options for the city?
Well, we do it now. We have a code enforcement team that keeps an eye on it. This building is on that list, and the property owner gets notified of graffiti, things occurring, and they're responsible to get cleaned up, they get fines. So it is an issue, not just this building, but any of those type of issues. We do monitor those through code enforcement, and even though they're vacant, they still have to be kept in good condition.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments, I'm going to open the public hearing.
We have no speaker cards.
I had a feeling.
Don't know why.
All right. Going to close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the, that we approve the one-year extension request with the conditions of approval shown in attachment two.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Flowers, seconded by Commissioner Van Duker. I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion does pass. Any determination by the planning commission may be appealed to the city council by filing a written notice of appeal, and the appropriate filing fees, two hundred and fifty dollars, with the city clerk not later than ten calendar days after the date on which the determination is made. Next item.
Item seven, general correspondence presentations and reports from city staff. It's going to be seven A, and that is to select a new vice chair.
Sorry, my recommendation didn't work out there, folks. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Oleg Niksho.
I'll second that nom, the nomination.
I have a nomination made by Commissioner Scheeler, seconded by Commissioner Van Duker to select Commissioner Shishko as our new vice chair. I will go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Commissioner Shishko. Next item.
Meeting is adjourned.
I have a couple things.
Sorry, Ally.
That's okay. So with the resignation of the commissioner, we have six of you now. So the city clerk's office is working on some sort of process, I'm not sure what that's going to be, to recruit a seventh member. So look for that. If you have no people interested, have them watch for postings. I believe it should be posted, at least for a short period of time, for people to apply. And then that would be a, a position would be appointed by the city council. And it's important to fill the position or to have an odd number of commissioners. Should there be an item that we have a tie vote, the odd number ensures that there is an outcome of some sort. So that is kind of what we're up against now with just a six-member board. Generally, we've been really good, we haven't had that issue, but what happens is we have, when we don't have a quorum, which a quorum for this body would be four people, that means if we don't have a four commission night, and we have an item, we need a four-oh vote in order for it to pass, three-one or anything different, it would be a fail of the motion. So it's kind of what we're up against with some upcoming items. If you recall, in January, we had the subdivision on Mariposa. We continued that to a future date, so we're trying to get that scheduled, which April tenth didn't work out, we weren't going to have enough people, and April twenty-fourth is kind of the date it's targeted now, but I think that night might be in jeopardy with the number. So just to kind of give you an idea of what, what we've been up against. So if we move it to May, I'm just getting a show of hands or some sort of comments, or you can email me or Stacy offline.
Does it help with the quorum if I show up, but I need to recuse myself anyway?
Yeah, that's the problem with the Mariposa one, even though there's five of you, you have to recuse yourself, and so it puts it down to four. Yeah. And so that's, is May, anyone know of any issues in May?
Looks like it'd be May eighth.
Oh, Marcel's smiling. That you have something? So you won't be here May eighth? Okay. So we're going to have to regroup. I don't know if it comes to maybe an off calendar meeting date, Casey, maybe off Wednesday?
Well, let's, let's see, we may come back to that, but how about the twenty-second for those that are here?
So I am tentatively available on the twenty-second, but that kind of depends on whether I get a grant to go to the NUSA event. So I will not know that information until the April council meeting.
Okay, we'll regroup and figure something out, and we'll do some polling.
And we'll, I'll talk to the applicant of that. I just want to make, when we give him a date, I just want him to know what he's up against. You know, if there's only four of you here, that's fine, but he has to realize that, you know, it's not a four-oh, either way, either decision, so. So, okay.
Any additional comments?
Are off calendar options available, like?
Possibly, we might, we might need to do that if.
We can do a special meeting.
Yeah, we are.
Noticeings a little bit different, but otherwise it's generally the same. We would pull your availability first to make sure that we have a quorum and can go there.
Our only requirement is that for a public hearing, a ten-day notice, but we don't have, it's, whether it's off-cycle, that's still fine.
April seventeenth.
The problem is we have to make sure our attorney's available and room's available and things like that too, but, so watch your emails, and if that date or maybe some other date isn't, comes up as an option, just respond to the emails.
All right. Thank you. With that, at six forty-two PM, this Wednesday, March thirteenth, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.